We have our city council meeting to order for October 2nd, 2024 at 6:32. Next on the agenda, we do have a quorum. Amanda will not be here tonight. Next on the agenda is the place of leaders.
I pledge to be the leader of the United States of America, the people of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and requested by the leaders to be Texas, one state, one God, one indivisible.
I'm about to choke here. My words are awfully wrong now. Okay. Reports from council. Ed Waters?
I just want to say we had a good, really good turnout last night for National Night Out. I want to thank the chief and the police department for furnishing some nice t-shirts for us and for Art and Kim for doing the cooking last night. It was a good turnout. We had a really good time.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Rick Fisher?
Next parks meeting is going to be next Tuesday at 8 o'clock, I'm sorry, on the 8th at 1:00 PM. We just actually met with Mike earlier today. We had a couple of representatives for some new park equipment come out a couple of weeks ago. I was able to be there with one and unfortunately I had to go to work with the other one, but apparently they were, especially the second one, it's just an absolute wealth of information on the different parks' equipment requirements and everything. Right now, we're just kind of wrangling around right now what exactly is going to be in the budget. And it looks like it's going to be, I don't want to say prohibitively expensive, but very expensive to put brand-new park equipment in. So we're looking at maybe just maintaining the equipment that we have and maybe adding a couple of things like some exercise stations around the island or in a certain spot, but that'll be coming up at the new meeting with all the new members next Tuesday.
Thank you, Rick. Jeff Terrell?
Really nothing to report, just to reiterate what, man, I lost your name. Ed, what Ed said. Thanks, Chief, for all of everything last night. Everything turned out well and I just want to appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Alex Scannan?
I'd like to thank Mike Cram for actually getting some things moving in the city. It's been nice. Appreciate you. It's been a refreshing change from last year. We're getting quotes from engineering companies and construction companies and things are actually progressing, so thank you a lot for that. It's been a struggle. I'd also like to thank everyone that applied on these committees. We've got a ton of people to appoint. This is the second time we've done this in the last, I guess, year. Second time we've had more than, more applicants than the positions available, which you go back five or six years, that didn't happen a lot, so thank you and, you know, we have to make a hard decision now who gets rejected, if you will, or doesn't get picked. So if you don't get picked, I'm sorry, I'm sure we're all sorry for that, but it's a good spot to be in, so thanks for applying and, you know, don't shy away from applying again.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Are you saying that because now you get a chance to come off of some of those committees? Thank you for all your hard work too, by the way. Okay. My report, the boat ramp, talked to people, the engineering company on that. We should be pretty close, I would say, a few weeks away from, they're probably going to approve it where we can move forward with getting a permit and then going out to bid on that. That's what they're expecting. Usually this late in the game, they would have asked us for another something or other and they haven't, so fingers crossed that happens in the next couple of weeks and we can get some real pricing on that and move forward with that project too. We approved the paving of the parking lot at the last meeting. We had a variance committee meeting on Monday and they approved the variance for that parking lot to move forward, so we will be moving forward with that project pretty soon. Mike's going to reach out, I'll let him tell his story, but Mike's going to probably reach out to the businesses this weekend, next, and kind of let them know as soon as we get a plan for how that's going to work so they know what's coming. Reiterate what these guys said. We had a great National Night Out, good turnout, hot dogs were good as always. Be sure you thank Art Olson for heading that up. And that's really all I got. We will move on to staff reports. Chief David Donaldson?
I'd like to thank everybody who came out with us last night. It was a very good time, good turnout, and thanks for everybody that contributes to National Night Out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. City Administrator Mike Cram?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things, as the mayor said, ZBOA, we met for the first time since 2022. Thank you for getting back together, Patrick. We were successful in being granted a variance, so we will move forward. The engineering firm we're working with, Colliers, is putting together a checklist to make sure we have all the necessary, the necessary compliance measures with the selected bidder, all their insurance certifications, bonds, et cetera. Spoke with the bidder today, or the construction company that was awarded the bid, so they're aware too that they need to be getting all those things together and that'll be coming. Hopefully, if we can get that by the end of the week, we'll have a path for moving forward and we can concrete a construction phase schedule. As it stands now, if we can get it moving forward within the next week or two, go ahead and give them a notice to proceed, then we should be completed with that project by the end of January if the weather holds out for us. Little bit for council about some upcoming programs that I'm working with the rest of my incredible staff on. Hopefully by the end of the year, you will be seeing a revised personnel policy and PD, some revised personnel or PD policies to coincide with those. Cheryl, our illustrious, award-winning finance director, is helping me immensely. We're working on requests for proposals for IT services, mowing and landscaping, pool maintenance and lifeguards, debris removal and financial software upgrades, so that'll be coming in the next several, over the course of the next several months. The city secretary is completing a calendar. When I first came, I asked her to put together something she, people haven't historically. If you don't know, Kristi is accountable by law as a city secretary for being our document procurement god, so to speak. She is responsible for all of our documentation, procurement and records. And in the past, some of the city administrations haven't done a really good job of sharing all of the contracts with her, et cetera, that she's responsible for maintaining. So she has been diligently digging through just myriad files that aren't really organized well to find any contracts or any local agreements and that kind of stuff that we have so that we can get those on a schedule and be warned when they're coming up to expire so that we don't get caught short in the future. So she's, she's come a long way on that and thank you to her for doing all that. Angie is working on a plan to have all building and permitting files scanned to digital storage before May, the start of next hurricane season, so if we do get a wipeout-type storm, we don't lose everything that we've got that's on paper and not in some storage, digital storage media. We also are going to speed up the council agenda packet coming out to council so that you guys, we're going to try to make sure that you guys get it by noon on Thursdays so that you have a chance, an extra day, to read over it in case you have questions for staff about anything that's upcoming and you're not getting it on a Friday when we work a half a day. So we'll try to make sure that we get that out at an earlier time. That's incumbent upon us, making sure we get everything to Kristi in a timely manner. And so hopefully you'll see a change there. I want to give a special thanks. I'm glad you're here tonight, David. So David Jones got to see the other side of, of the happy faces of staff and our residents last week. He sat patiently outside my office, literally stood in the hallway outside my office door while I was ranted at for about 15 or 20 minutes by an unhappy resident who, and I'm saying this for everyone's benefit, I've said since I got here that I treat everybody the same. If the rules apply to one, the rules have to apply to everybody. And this person had never been held to the same standard in some regards previously and received citations and incurred fines for some code violations and obviously wasn't happy and wanted to share that attitude or that, or express that feeling with me. And David Jones sat patiently in the hallway outside and listened to this for several minutes until our discourse was completed. He was holding a big white paper bag and in it he had gone to La Mer on 2094 and bought an entire big bag full of pastries for our employees. And he stood out there and endured this for several minutes just so he could make sure our employees knew that they were appreciated by some of our residents. So David, thank you very much for that.
And did Mike, Mike, didn't he say something to the effect of, hey, I just came to tell y'all thank you?
He did. He actually said-
I'm not here to complain.
He said, "I know I come up here a lot, but I wanted you to know that I really appreciate everything that you guys do and I'm not always just asking for something or pointing out something that you need to fix." So David, thanks again. Regarding code enforcement, so as I read through some of our ordinances and I've listened to some of the challenges we've had with consistent code enforcement measures in the past, I need to make sure that council is fully aware that if, for certain code enforcement things, vehicles, boats, that kind of stuff, public meetings are required. Those can be sticky because if it involves us actually taking something to the judge to get a seizure order for a dilapidated vehicle or a sinking boat or something like that, it's you guys put on the spot in front of the public to hear their, their position. There is a great deal of work and staff time that has to go into that. It eats up a lot of Angie's time to jump through all of those hoops that we then have to take it to court, so we have to put together documentation to make a case basically to take to the judge. So there's, there's a cost to the city inherent in that process. But before I begin that, I need to make sure that that's the want of council, that I start pursuing those code enforcement things for continued high grass and weeds, dilapidated buildings, vehicles that are immovable, that are broken down in driveways. I drove by one house last, earlier this week that had a jet ski on a trailer that you could barely see because the weeds were growing over it. I find those things to be a blight. I don't think that's the will of most of the residents of this city to have to incur that kind of unsightliness when they drive past it. That's not what they want to see as they come into the neighborhood. It's not what they want their visitors to see as they come into the neighborhood, but I want to make council well aware that all of that stuff has to go to a public hearing if it involves personal property. So as I move forward with this program, please reach out to me before I start that stuff, on a sidebar, give me a call, something, come see me and let me know what your thoughts on it are because it, like I said, it's a lot of work for the staff and I don't want to waste the time the staff has to go to something that's not necessarily supported by council. And please don't take that as me saying if you don't do that, that's, that is a sticky thing. You guys are selected by these people and if, if public meetings can be difficult, I get that. So I want to make everybody well aware of how it could go before we start going down that path. That was it.
And we do have ordinances on a lot of those things and we are getting calls to the PD to act on these things also, as well as you are getting calls.
It's, yeah, I've, I've heard several people complain about certain places on the island and around the city that needs some, that haven't necessarily been attended to in the past because it's been uncomfortable. It's been difficult, so just let me know if you would. I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Moving on, we'll go to public comments. If any, at this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual and there will be no yielding of time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the city council? Linda, will you, will you do me a favor? Just try to speak into it because we are missing some audio from time to time on these videos because people aren't speaking into it directly.
We'll be happy to. Thank you, Mayor.
That sounds a lot better than it sounded in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of y'all for being here. My name is Linda Machowski. I live at 1019 North Shore Drive. One year ago, I came before council and I requested that a great injustice be corrected. Mr. Gregg, you were given all the file from the city, my building file, it's about this thick, in regards to my home at 1019 North Shore Drive. My question is, have you made a determination if my home is lawfully built or is it unlawfully built? As I was accused of building an unlawful structure 10 years after my home was established. This accusation was on City Letterhead. It was made by former land surveyor and mayor Ted Guthrie. This statement was used by Councilman John Wright to justify great harm that he did to me by flooding my home three different occasions by building illegally. I truly would like to know for my integrity, did I build unlawful or did I build a legal structure? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Machowski. Anyone else like to address council? Sure.
Mayor and council, Patrick Machowski, 1019 North Shore. I'm just here tonight to make recommendations for the two committees on my own. I know we have members that are coming up. I believe each of the members that seat is coming up for renewal have reapplied to be on both the zoning board of adjustments and the planning and zoning. Those committees work well together even though we don't meet very often. So my, my personal recommendation is that you consider those members that have reapplied. I don't think anybody else has applied for those committee, but just wanted to put out my two cents worth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Machowski. Anyone else like to address city council? Okay, having none, we'll close the public comments and we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have anything that we'd like to make corrections on or pull from the consent agenda? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A and B.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Rick, got a second by Ed. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Moving on to number seven, new business, discussion of possible action may be taken on the following items. A, item A, appoint two members to the waterfront compliance committee to serve a two-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. Doug, would you, do you have any recommendations for your committee, sir?
Yeah, Doug Whitmarsh, Chair of the Waterfront Compliance Committee. We had a meeting and we have a charter for a five-member committee and we voted to return the two members that got off, myself and Craig Ramsey, back to the committee. Received two other applications, so committee going well.
Thank you. So you guys reviewed this and there are more than two applications and the committee has their recommendation. Do we have any motion on the waterfront compliance committee?
I make a motion that we take in consideration Doug's recommendation to keep the same committee members that they have now, they've been, excuse me, they've been working well together, so I'll make that motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Ed, got a second by Alex. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Moving on to the next committee. Item B, appoint three members to the parks committee to serve a two-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. Mary is not here, but I believe we have Rick who is here and who is their liaison.
I am, and I'd like to make a motion that for the parks committee, we appoint Luis Cooney, Cooney, sorry if I mispronounced that, Doreen Pettit and Melissa Stoffer for the parks committee.
Got a motion by Rick. We got a second?
I'll second that.
Got a second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Alex? Motion passes unanimous. Moving on to item C, appoint three members to the Rose and Drainage Committee to serve a two-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. Richard, would you like to speak on that? Thomas did call me today since he wouldn't be here, so I have those recommendations written down.
Again, we work really well together. I'm sorry, with Alex not necessarily being able to join us, but I think David would make a good addition. He's an electrical engineer and we talked about him and we'd like to have him on board.
Okay, so, so there's three positions up, so-
Richard, quick question.
Richard, quick question. There's two Davids.
David Jones.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, so that's one person.
All motion for Tony Peterson, Richard Salary and David Jones to the Rose and Drainage Committee.
All right, we have a motion by Alex, got a second by Jeff.
It's supposed to be three.
David Jones, Richard Salary, Tony Peterson.
There you go.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Jeff, Alex and then Jeff. Okay, moving on to item D, appoint three members and one alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve a two-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. I believe, like Patrick was saying, for that committee, the same people re-up, we still do not have another application for an alternate at this time. I think you guys have been without an alternate for a while because of that. So do we have a motion to keep the current members of that committee?
I'll make a motion we keep the current members to the zoning board of adjustments.
Planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning board of adjustments?
Yes.
Oh, planning and zoning commission, that's right.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Ed, got a second by Rick. Any discussion?
I'll second that.
Jeff, I'm sorry. Motion by Jeff, second by Rick.
Since Mr. Jones, you're here and you applied for two committees, would you like to be the alternate for the planning and zoning committee? Either one of you, really, anyone. We have an empty spot.
So, so as you heard, when's the last time y'all met? Two years ago?
The planning and zoning, that's what we-
Okay.
We meet once or twice a year. The zoning board of adjustments, I think, two years.
She didn't turn her application in, sir. You did.
I was not. Yeah.
Linda's asking if you want to do the call, which means you called her and you didn't.
Okay, so-
I have a discussion.
Nope. So we have a motion on the table to reappoint the current members. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. All right, we're moving on to item E, appoint two members and one alternate to the zoning board of adjustments to serve a two-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. I think we have the same situation there. There's only the same two people that put in their application. So do we have a motion for that committee?
I'll make a motion we appoint the two current members to the zoning board of adjustments.
And I'll second that.
Okay, y'all are confusing me now. No. So we have a motion by Jeff, a second by Ed. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Okay, item F, review and approve the city fee schedule for fiscal year 2025. So you guys got this in your packet. There was some discussion at the city, one of the items. Does anybody want to make a motion so we can discuss?
I'll go and make a motion that we approve the city fee schedule for fiscal year 2025.
Okay, and a motion by Rick.
I'll second that.
Got a second by Ed. Any discussion? Okay, I, I do have one comment I want to make. So it was brought to my attention that when you look down here at the yearly lease fee per linear foot of right-of-way footage, you guys can elect to leave it at $7.15, but the current Consumer Price Index says it's gone up 3.1%, which if you change that, it would go up to $7.37 from $7.15. Just so you guys know, we haven't changed that fee schedule in six years. It's been the same for the last six years. So it's something that if we approve this, I just wanted to bring that up. I know it's, it's more money for something, but we have not changed that in six years. So it's just something that I think before we approve this, we should think about, we want to approve it or not. Doesn't matter to me. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Are we able to change it even though we entered a 10-year lease contract at the end of last year? We can change the fee?
I'm trying to make a agreement that the city council can change it any and when you guys want to.
Yeah, and that's why it was brought forward is because it says in the lease agreement that it can be changed every single year and we haven't changed it in six years. Doesn't mean we have to change it right now. I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that.
You said the new fee would be $7.37?
It would be $7.37.
So that's 22, that's 22 cents a year per person. How much of a difference is that going to-
Per foot.
Per foot?
Per linear foot. Depending on how big your lease is.
Right, so any idea what, what we'd be talking about as far as extra income?
Well, let me just give you, for example, so a 40-foot lease, which no one's really supposed to have more than 40 feet unless you're grandfathered, would be $292.40. If, if you did it at the, instead of $286. So it would go up, what? Six, six bucks a year? I am not saying we have to raise the price, I'm just saying if we're going to agree with this, and this, another thing is this won't go into effect, all of those have just been paid, so it won't go into effect until next August when they're due. It's August, right, Kristi? August 1st?
July 31st.
July 31st, yes. So-
That's the Consumer Price Index since 2018 or that's Consumer Price Index this year?
That's now.
For this one?
That's this year.
The 3.1 is 2024.
That's the current. 3.1% is the current.
But y'all haven't gone up in six years.
We haven't.
I guarantee you the CPI from six years ago to now is much higher than 3%.
Yes. So this is actually considering what it went up from 23 to 24.
Correct.
That's what it's considering. Yeah.
Yeah, right. That's the point I'm getting at is that I'm not sure you've gone up or not, you know, but it's all a call.
Yeah, well, I get it. But-
I'm fine leaving it where it is.
What's that?
Fine leaving it where it's at.
Hey, we can choose to do whatever we want. I just wanted you guys to have that information because if we're going to change it, now's the time.
Can I offer something, Mayor?
Yes, sir, you may.
So, whatever the council decides, moving forward into the next year, I would offer that we could have this discussion before we do budget so that Cheryl knows exactly how much money she's bringing in for those lease fee agreements and all that stuff before she prepares her budget. Not that I'm against changing the fee schedule, we can do that anytime we want if need be, but it helps Cheryl when she's prepping the final figures if she knows those numbers in advance. Just a thought.
Yeah, that's kind of what I- Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. I, you know, I know we could use the extra money, but we really, you know, haven't had time to, you know, discuss it and figure out what it's going to do for the budget and if, you know, like Dick was saying, if that's actually going to be high enough to cover the CPI from us for the last six years. So I'll-
So, so hold on one second. So this won't go into effect until basically August 1st of 2025. So it's going to affect the last couple months of the budget in, in truth?
Because the leases, lease payments aren't due until July, that would be in the following year. I understand that. So, yeah, that makes more sense.
Yes.
Yeah, it would still be with a couple months of the budget, yeah, but it would have lesser, lessened impact on any change.
Patrick Machowski, 1019 North Shore. In reference to fees, not necessarily the ones for the waterfront, but the fees that the city charges for open records, I think are historically low. I think it's, I think your city staff spends much more time and effort on gathering information for your records request than you charge. I think, you know, I've asked for them and I don't mind paying more. I, I think the cost per page needs to be more, even if it's electronically sent, I think there needs to be a charge to recoup the city secretary, the building officials' time in gathering that information because I, I just, I've had to do this myself, working for UTMB and for the governor's office in South Carolina, and y'all rates are just, you know, i- it's like you're losing money if you're spending a lot of time gathering records. As, as a citizen, I would be willing to pay for the actual costs and there are methodologies of coming up with city staff time, even if they email it to you. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So in reference to that, I don't think that's in this fee schedule. I think there, that we are limited to what we can charge, although we may be pretty low. That is something that we have brought up to our attorney and I believe Mike and Dick are working on that as we speak to actually charge more for that legally within the law, not just randomly pick a number. So thank you for bringing that up, but, but I believe Mike's already touched on that and they have had some conversations. So we have a motion on the table. Is there any more discussion about the, the fee schedule?
Is that something we can go back later and amend as well?
The, the waterfront? I believe we can. I believe we can-
Yeah, I think we can change this, we can change all of this at any time. Yeah, you, you can change it all at any time. I, I would say that with respect to the building permit fees, we do need to hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of those and I don't think it's listed on here as a public hearing. But you can adopt these if these are the ones that-
Are current?
Are current.
Yes.
But I do think we need to put on the next agenda to, at least with respect to the building permit fees, hold a public hearing on that if we're going to change those fees. I don't know, I don't know if they're being changed at all-
They're not being changed at this time.
Here from before, okay.
Yeah, so, so those fees are not being adjusted at this time. This is just approving in respect to those fees what we were charging the last budget year.
Okay. The, the only reason I say that is that there was this, a state law that came out last year that talked about the, that you need to reappoint those building fees. I think you have to do it every 10 years. And so if you don't, then you're not able to charge the fees, which is why I think we need to hold a, a public hearing on it soon.
Okay.
Even if you're going to adopt the same fees so that we know that they're good for another 10 years. Unless we did that last year, but I don't recall whether we did or not.
But we renewed these every year, no?
No, well, we approved the schedule every year, but we haven't focused on the building fees. It's been several years.
Then we need to, we need to add it to the next agenda and then just have a public hearing just specifically on the building fees.
Okay.
And get public input on that and then adopt, even if you're going to adopt the same ones, I want to do that so that we know that they're at least, I guess, re-approved for another decade, even if you don't change it over the next 10 years, so.
So if we, so you're saying we cannot change it for 10 years once you adopt it? Or you would have to have a hearing if you, if you did that, if you wanted to change it?
Well, it's saying if you don't, if you don't re-approve the fees after 10 years has expired from when they were adopted, that they're no longer in effect.
Okay.
So it, it's important to do so that you know that they're, that they're good for the next 10 years, so we would need to have that public hearing just to make sure.
So would you recommend at this time that we approve this fee schedule without those? And shall we have that hearing or go ahead and do it and then have the hearing?
You, you can approve it as the fees that are currently adopted, but we will go back in, in a belt and suspenders approach and make sure that we have the public hearing on the building fees.
Okay.
And then re-approve them.
Okay. So, so we have a motion on the table. Are we going to make any adjustments to any of these fees or are we going to adopt it just like it is right now?
No, I don't, so we can, we're, we're good just leaving the building fees like they are and then doing the public hearing?
Yep.
Okay, well then, motion stands as stated, no changes.
Okay, any, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. All right, that will lead us to the end. We will recess the meeting at 7:10 PM.